Hi Carolyn.
Hi Jessica.
Okay, let's see.
Hello ladies.
Hello. How are you Mr. Cox?
Good.
Good.
Well, I'll talk about it later, but why do we, why do we post it with the language about no public speaking?
That's how it's all, that's how every single one has done, been done in the past. So that's why I just kept it, but if we can change that, I don't mind. Um, that's just how literally every other special session that I found the agenda on.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that's just.
Well, I'll just mention it then, because really I, I don't think we need, we're not going to get any public comment that we haven't already heard before.
Right.
And I, yeah.
Well, and.
Not a good deal.
Okay, yeah, we got some emails today and I think everyone was, but I can't obviously introduce them because they were a little late and all those fun things.
Right, and that's, you know, all this information we can get later on regardless of what happens, it'll be useful information for.
Got it.
Because that's, yeah, so.
No, that's fine. And yeah, that's, that should be good. And then, um, yeah, that's, they're really, I mean, I, I was asked a bunch of times why there is no packet. There isn't anything for me to do, you know, I mean, there isn't a packet.
Right.
Just what we've been talking about, so. Um, but I also did read the charter too, that for special sessions, it's actually really interesting when I was reading it, I was reading it last night, that I, we can, if anything becomes so much of emergency, we can call special sessions within three hours.
Right.
So I was like, oh, that's perfect. That, you know, that was actually good to know too, so.
But that's like, that's.
That's major dire, we're, yeah, we're, you know, we're floating our own boats trying to figure it out, type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I hate how accessible people are now, like you gotta have your cellphone. I can get so much more work done with an answer, you know what I mean, with an answering machine than I would check after lunch or something.
Yeah, it's, well, I went today and met with, um, Kim Nye at Siskiyou Realty because she had a bunch of questions, so I went there. I was over there for two and a half hours. And so I got back and I look at.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I had like forty messages on my phone. I'm like, oh my gosh, okay, we're getting there, trying to, so.
And that's, yeah, and that's why you have to keep answering them because it's so easy to get backlog if you don't.
Exactly, exactly. Hence the, you know, midnight 1:00 AM emails when I can't sleep and everyone else is snoring in my house, it's easier. So.
Alright, so I see three counselors, no, two now, oh, three again.
So we have Carolyn, Greg, Gary.
Gary.
Lauren is on here and Tim is on here, it says, um, but I don't.
Oh, they are, okay. I just waiting for a name.
Okay, good. I'll be right back, but I'll, I'll.
James is.
I can hear you.
And James is not here yet. We're still, it looks like we're still waiting for James.
Okay, Greg, you only have two minutes, so if you could have the hurry with whatever you do, because two minutes.
Thanks, Greg, appreciate that.
Alright, one minute, you have one minute.
And I did open what we talked about, so that's something I might, I might just bring up quickly in the meeting too, just so everyone's aware.
What we talked about just a minute ago?
Yeah, what was in our emails, going back and forth. I'm texting it, so.
Oh, it's 5:30.
Okay, I'm gonna start the recording.
Oh.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're good.
I don't think we need to talk about that one at this special session now.
Okay.
Because that's not even really a, that's not even really a council.
Okay, perfect.
Not a policy thing, so we can talk about it.
Got it.
Okay then, uh, and you said Tim and Lauren were here and we're waiting on James?
James is here.
James is here.
I am here, can you hear me?
James is on now, yeah, so everyone's on now, I see them all, all city council members.
Great, okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and open up this, uh, special session of the City Council of Port Orford Thursday, September 23rd at 5:30, 2021. Um, not a whole lot on the agenda here, uh, I don't really like having meetings without public comment, it's not really how I feel meetings should be, but we do have this portion that we've already posted about the no public comment. We did get a lot of correspondence after the agenda was out. Uh, and I think we've, we have enough input for what we need to decide tonight to, uh, to be okay, is what I feel. Are you guys okay with no public comment and moving forward? Do you feel like you have the information you need? Okay, I can't, can't see everybody, so. Yes. Jessica, you got that background noise again, or maybe it's caller two. Alright, so we'll call this meeting to order. All counselors are present, uh, LaRoche, Tidy, Burns, Garrett, Pogwiddes, and Kessler. Um, our one item on the agenda is vacation rentals. Like I say, we've heard both sides of it. Um, we know the issues that the city is facing with the water, we know that we have some housing issues, and we know why we're here tonight, um, so rather than have, uh, another hour of discussion, if any of you have a motion, uh, we can start with that and then, um, discuss.
I have a motion.
What's, who said that first?
Lauren.
Lauren, go ahead, sorry, I can't see you.
That, that's okay. Uh, I move that the city of Port Orford immediately put in place a moratorium against allowing the establishment of any new vacation rental businesses. This will provide us the time to do the recent, the thorough research necessary on these businesses' impact on our community and steps we need to take based upon the information that we find.
I'll second that.
Wow.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Unfortunately Shayla's not here, but, uh, I think that works, because we all know we have a sixty day timeframe, we all know that we came here today to shorten that timeframe. Uh, so I'll just go around the room for discussion. Carolyn, do you have anything you want to discuss on this before we vote?
Uh, not on the moratorium, no.
Okay, uh, Greg?
Uh, timeframe.
You want to talk about?
I, look, uh, you didn't say timeframe?
Pardon?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just going through because I can't see anybody, so speak up if you have any more comments before we call for this vote.
What's the timeframe of the moratorium? For the vacation, for the vacation rentals?
Uh, excuse me, you, you can't be talking in the middle of, of a meeting unless you're a counselor.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Pat, this is James, can I?
Yes.
Speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Two, two things, um, it's kind of an improperly formed motion. Um, motions are not supposed to contain, um, self-explanation, reasoning, et cetera, they're supposed to contain just the action and pertinent details of the action. I would request that this motion be redone because of that, that's, that's too much on the motion. I don't object to the motion itself, um, you know, the intention, but that's just generally not how it's done. Um, and two, um, I do believe one hundred percent that a timeframe for expiration of a moratorium uh, and a start time of the moratorium, um, need to be included in the motion clearly defined.
Well, that's true, but that will be established. Uh, all we're doing tonight is making a motion to move forward to start the process of the moratorium. The moratorium's gonna take sixty days and take public hearings, and I, I understand what you're saying about the motion, James. Uh, I mean, it could be as easy as, uh, you know, I moved to start the process of the moratorium on newer unlicensed rentals or something along those lines and, and clean it up. And I agree, I know we're gonna have to have the timelines, James, you are correct when we put the moratorium in, but right now we're deciding if we want to move forward with that process.
Okay, well, to be clear, that is not what the motion said, and so if you want to have a motion that says that the council will begin the process, then that doesn't actually vote any moratorium in place. The motion as it stands would in fact create an instant moratorium.
Understood, understood, because it's immediately and we can't, we can't do that, so. Your turn, James, um, so if we, uh, if you withdraw your second and Lauren, uh.
I'll, I'll withdraw, word.
Hey, Pat, I had a comment as well.
Okay.
Is this, is this in residential zones that we're talking about?
No, it's everywhere. I, I mean, I, I thought the intention was to put a stop on vacation, new vacation rentals until we had this lined out as far as numbers and, I mean, how do we pick on one, like, how do we, how do we split it out like that? You know, we're just, we're going.
Well, your commercial zones are where these are allowed, that's basically how you do it.
Well, is the water issue tied in with this at all in your opinion?
But then, so we gotta find out, right, in this moratorium, is this, are we gonna do it in all zones, or that's what, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Right, so what we're doing right now is deciding if we want to explore that, or, you know, move forward with that process and the moratorium won't be in place for sixty days at best, and that's what I thought we were doing, was trying to speed up our timeline, or that's what we agreed to do last meeting, that's why we're here, to see if we want to do that or not, so.
So, we're not putting this in place for sixty days, or, or we're getting ready to change out the new motion?
We, we, we are trying to, we're, we're deciding if we want to, the next meeting have the first step of in place, of putting in place a moratorium on vacation rentals.
Okay.
So, so this is not.
But since we built this, I need to take out the word immediately. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and kind of your explanation, more, more like, uh, I moved to, to go forth with the moratorium on whatever you want to put the moratorium on, uh, you know, just starting the process.
Okay, so I, I, I removed my original, uh, motion and I'd like to make, restate it, and, and thank you, James. Uh, I move that the city of Port Orford put in place a moratorium against allowing the establishment of any new vacation rental businesses.
No.
Well, but in, instead of put in place, we need to start the process.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Harrison, could you please mute your phone or computer?
Okay, I move that the city of Port Orford, uh, begin the process to create, to put in place a moratorium against allowing the establishment of any new vacation rental businesses.
That seems pretty clean. What do you think, James?
I'll second that.
I, I approve. Second. Okay. Oh, and so now, thank you for doing that, James, it's been a very long day, so.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah.
I'm happy to help towards the goal of the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, so, any comment on that?
Oh, so, what, what's the pro, oh. Well, what's the process, so we go?
Well, because Shayla couldn't be here tonight, we are, we're, we're saying we want, if we vote for yes, then we're saying we want to move forward with the process and she will start doing the footwork on it, the legalese of it, and that's why, we're just getting in a couple of weeks, for, you know, three weeks on the process, so we're not waiting another month, which would make it ninety days, so.
And the possibility of having another special session to, if we wanted to, prior to the next meeting?
If we want, yeah, if we want to go that fast, we could, but it's also on Shayla's timeline too, and I'm not sure.
So I'm just wondering if we want to discuss that, when, after we pass this, and Shayla knows that we would want to do that.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, if it passes, it's as easy as telling her that we want it as fast as possible, and if we have to, if we can do it before the meeting, gotcha. But first we have to find out if we need to do that, so.
Right.
Uh, any other comments?
Um, I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, so city council members are aware that I've been in contact with the administrator at, in Cus Bay with regards to their moratorium, so that we kind of are, you know, trying to make sure that we follow all the rules, all those fun things too, where Shayla and I have both been and following what they're doing, so that we can make sure that we have everything covered with regards to getting it in place, so.
Gotcha. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, so we are going to decide on if we want to move forward with the moratorium process on vacation rentals. I'm gonna call for the vote.
Uh, Tim, Tim wants to say it.
Um, so what I would like to point out, I've had several people reach out to me this week, um, I'm not saying we have to do this, it's just been a suggestion to me, um, should we contact businesses that both benefit from tourism, our local businesses, should we reach out to those businesses? This was a question that was asked of me. Um, yes, we know they benefit from tourism, and yes, we know that there is a housing crisis that they don't benefit from when their employees need houses, but I wonder if we should reach out to these businesses to get some information from them, whether they think it's a good idea, it's a bad idea, and then the other question would be, should we reach out to the vacation rentals that are in Port Orford, so they're fully aware of this process and that it's going on, so they can be involved. That's the only two, two, two questions really that, I had several other comments, but those are the two things they ask.
And my answer to that, Tim, would be that we have the whole process for people, you know, we're gonna have public hearings, we have other meetings, we have to decide if we're even gonna do that, so uh, in the next couple of weeks, we would have an opportunity to notify everyone, and it would be their choice if they wanted to participate in the process or not. But it's not like we're making a decision tonight, an ultimatum, it's just if not, if or if not, we want to move forward with the process.
Okay.
So, what else you got, Tim?
No, that's it, that was just, it was two good points that I thought the, the folks that contacted me had, I, the other items are just, I mean, I can go on and on, and there's no reason in doing that at this meeting, I mean, we, we, we all know there's, there's, there's pros and cons to both sides, it's.
Right, and like I say, this is a process, so everyone will have a lot more time to interject, including us, and will gain more knowledge, obviously, and people are gonna be calling us for the next couple of weeks, for sure, so.
Right.
Um, anyone else?
Um, I do have a couple of things. Oh, go ahead, Gary.
I, I'll come back to you, Gary. Oh, he said, go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
Um, I just, um, a couple of times Tim has mentioned it, and I get the feeling like he's thinking we're thinking of eliminating vacation rentals, but I think we're trying to see if we want to limit the number of vacation rentals.
Right.
And I would imagine everybody would be agreeing that the number of vacation rentals we currently have is definitely appropriate, and whether, how many more we want, so I don't think anybody is wanting to take vacation rentals away.
Um, right, or we would be voting to abolish it.
Right, yeah, so this is a matter of trying to make it so that everybody can live with the idea of vacation rentals, we can glean the benefits of the vacation rentals, and yet still maintain the livability of our, our neighborhoods and, uh, in the city overall.
Understood.
So, that brings to mind, so before the term vacation rentals came out, short-term rentals were called like motel rooms, I don't know if anybody remembers those kind of things, but so we have to define what vacation rental means, because then you're going into that commercial side, and we need to know, you know, what we're voting on, I mean, a motel room is a short-term rental, just like a vacation rental, but they're two different animals.
Right.
So.
Right now, we're voting on if we want to explore that process or not.
Correct, correct.
We're not making really any decision but that, tonight.
And, and, and just, just to say, guys, that's the reason I was compelled to add, and, and thank you, James, for having me, you know, shorten it, but that was why I was compelled to say that it gives us the time to do the full research to look at the aspects of, uh, the businesses that we, the vacation rental business, and of course, you know, you have to look at all sides to really make an evaluation, you can't just look at one side, so that was the idea behind that, but I, I don't, believe me, I, to shorten it would be much better, so that's why I agree.
Right, yeah, it goes, it goes so much deeper than the number of units and what we have and what we want to have, I mean, we're, no one's even mentioned the water issues. We're in a drought this year, no reason to think we won't be in droughts, I mean, it's a coin flip, we might have the wettest winter ever, but obviously, things are not looking good right now, and we also have to, uh, prepare for that, and so it will help on that aspect a little bit too, we're going into winter, so we will gain, we'll get the answers on this, you know, we'll figure this out, and, uh, go, well, if we decide, we're still deciding if we want to move forward. James, go ahead.
Okay, um, I, I'm, I'm adding to what I wanted to say here, and gonna say this first, is, um, after what Lauren just said, I'm possibly confused that there, or, or concerned that there could be confusion with the motion, um, so I just want to clarify that Lauren understands that this motion is not putting a moratorium in place for the next period of time, and that if somebody comes in and starts a vacation rental tomorrow, they can still do that. And that we're just starting the procedure.
I, I, I completely understand that.
Okay, okay, just making sure that we are all, in fact, on the same page here, so, um, okay.
We're starting somewhere.
Oh, I, yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, so, uh, everybody knows, knows my viewpoints and whatnot, so I'm not gonna go into length reiterating that. Um, you know, I object to the process and whatnot, I don't think that our city is anywhere near the point of having to worry about that. There are more important concerns we could be worrying about, like gaining revenue through gas tax, um, which has been put on the sideburner repeatedly over and over and over and over again. Um, have I expressed my impatience? Uh, because I'm not used to that.
You have to put it on the agenda.
Uh, well, you assured me last time that you would get it onto the agenda, because you postponed it several times when I requested, and so it was the ball's in your court, Pat.
Okay, I thought we were in the lurch, but no problem, no, it's, we already decided to have it on the agenda, and, and I started for degrading this meeting.
That's okay, um, I, uh, so, you know, I think we could focus on more important things and whatnot, since this moratorium is not gonna address our current water issue, uh, or anything like that, it might address an issue for next year or whatnot, you know, so, um, I don't know that the rush has really merited, that's, that's part of my whole thing, but, um, uh, let's see. Uh, oh, I did also want to point out that the word moratorium does indicate a short-term or temporary uh, application of denial and, um, is not an appropriate word, I believe, for a long-term restriction, just for the record and whatnot, but I think we've already kind of cleared up that we understand the intention of the motion and whatnot that's in place, so I, I think we're good. Um, I do know that a lot of people have already started responding to this, and I'm thankful to the public for that. Uh, I would appreciate more information on both sides of the argument, if people want to send it to me, I'm sure a lot of the counselors are also open to receiving information. Um, and I do want to point out that if we do proceed in this process, it will be a land use process, and therefore, uh, a letter will actually have to be sent out to everyone.
No.
This has to be land use.
I will actually, yes, I, I am gonna agree with Carolyn James on this for land use, because it all depends on how we write the ordinance, um, it does not necessarily have to be land use, there's multiple different jurisdictions that have it change their rental, you know, their definitions for residential, so that they can include them in there, they, there's a, there's a bunch of different ways to do it, so it's not necessarily only land use. Um, so that's something that we've already, I've done a lot of research, and I think it was in the last packet actually too, so there's a lot of different, it's not necessarily just an only land use.
Gotcha.
Uh, well, if it, if it involves land use, then you have to take the most stringent path, that is the.
Right, but we don't need to. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't need to worry about this right now, because we will have our attorney going through the whole process with this, and we're just gonna decide right now if we want to move forward with that process. Uh, so I will call for the vote. Um, because I, I really honestly think all these questions will be answered beyond this meeting, this meeting is just expediting the process if we want to, so Carolyn?
Yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
James?
James, no.
Gary?
Yes.
Tim?
Tim's willing to look at the process, yes.
And Lauren?
Yes, Lauren, yes.
Alright, so the motion passes, we are gonna start exploring this, we just sped up our timeline, um, so, yeah, we have, uh, we have a job in front of us, um, and like I say, there, there's a lot of angles to it, and yeah, so we'll get it, we'll get it done.
I'm wondering about having a mediator, and whether that's something that's possible, or, um, to have somebody that can help us pull this all together, because it seems like we need to have some kind of a process when we start discussing these bullet points.
Yeah, and I think this, yeah, I totally agree, and I think this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to figure out a way to have, uh, workshops with the planning commission to save us months and months of time, and to save them months of time. Carolyn?
No, I thought this was, uh, tonight we were supposed to. No, I thought this was, uh, tonight we were supposed to be going through things that we needed to think about if they were possible or if they were necessary. Like if we don't get something done, someone could come in tomorrow, buy up a large piece of property and decide I'm going to build condominiums and I'm making them all vacation rentals.
Correct, and that's why we.
The vacation rentals we have, we know are gonna be grandfathered in regardless because you're not gonna be able to tell these people they can't continue to do what they're doing now. But we can set a limit on it. And we need to know what we need to do to do this correctly, so everyone can be happy with it.
Right.
And I don't think it's a land issue.
Gotcha, and so what we just decided was to start getting those, those answers, so, uh, so the first, like, the whole time we're gonna be learning and you're right, someone could come into Buck Mile and, and buy a big lot and make it all vacation rentals, but that's the law. We're bound by the law or we probably would have been able to come to the decision last meeting. And so that's why we sped it up and we know we're gonna have a 60-day window. So we all just have to get as much information as we can. There's a lot of cities around that are doing the same thing and they don't necessarily have a water problem. And, and, uh, I think once we get our, our reservoir fixed, then, you know, things will change. But I feel like this is a good time to have this conversation and we need to manage our growth. Gary?
Now, we just started the process of a moratorium, but we haven't started any process for initiating regulations or what have you, so how is that to get started?
Well, can, can we, can we actually not permit any, I mean, I, I guess they're permitted as a business, but can we not give, uh, permits out to any new, uh, uh, business?
There's no permits. I'm just wondering how we're starting the process. Well, we just initiated the beginning of a moratorium.
Or decided we wanted to do it, yeah.
But that doesn't really say if we want to initiate regulations and, um, create an ordinance, does it? Or did it?
Not really, it's just, uh, we could do regulations too, but it's just the stopgap in it. So we, I mean, if we do the regulations before we do the moratorium, then we're gonna be talking about that for months and that would just open the door for more lots being bought, more vacation rentals coming in, and so.
How's, how's, so we have to wait for the moratorium to start the process of looking at regulations?
Not at all, not at all. We can totally start looking at regulations and we can start looking at it on the next agenda while we're talking about it. There's no reason, you know, like, even if we didn't go forward with the moratorium that we just voted on doing, if we don't move forward with that, doesn't mean we can't regulate it still. It's just the process. And so, yes, I hear what you're saying and we can have that on the next agenda to, to start, to start doing, to start regulating, to start figuring out which angle we want to go from.
We're gonna wait until the next meeting.
Well, I. There's 46 rentals here in Port Orford as of right now tonight.
Gotcha.
Uh, you. That includes outside city limits.
Well, when it looks, when you do the math, James, uh, all of them except for me. So let's say 10, so 30, 35 just right now, 10, just, you know, I mean, that doesn't mean there are available.
My actual account, my count for city limits, actual city limits came to 19 and that was confirmed by another citizen who did account and contacted me.
This morning? Uh, just today, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's, it's, it should be 19, give or take a couple that are inside city limits.
Cool, I'll do more research on the CC ones. Go ahead.
Gotcha, and that's the phase we're in right now is researching. Gary, just to reiterate, we will be working on it. The next meeting is, uh,
October 21st, it looks like. October 21st, yep.
Okay, so Gary, now that we, now that we know that we're moving forward with this, we'll be in touch with Shayla to see how fast we can start this ball rolling. We do need to start thinking about the regulations, so if we can speed it up, we will. But it's a lot of research too, so, um, but if he says we can, right. And if she says that, oh, this will only take me a couple of days to get together and we want to move faster, then we can talk about that. I mean, I can just call a meeting if, if needed, so, uh, I'm gonna go with Carolyn.
Uh, Jessica would like to say something.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to say that one of the processes of the moratorium um, is when we decide how long, when we go through the process of it, is we also have to have a stop date and the plan and what we're gonna be looking into. So before we even, it's declared, we already have to kind of know the general direction and the items that they want to tackle and that ordinance is gonna be written and all those things. They have to be written physically in the moratorium that is gonna be in place. So a lot of those answers will be in the next few meetings as we get through this.
Right, so basically we need to call Shayla tomorrow and tell her what we voted on and see, you know, the fastest we can do that, that process, because Gary's right, we need to have the reasoning behind the, the moratorium if it happens and we don't want to add an extra month to it because we didn't have those decisions made up. So we also need to know how broad those, the, the criteria on that can be, you know what I mean? Like, we wanted to, if we can, yeah, you're not a friend.
Yeah, we're good.
So, and so can you, uh, well, I guess on the next agenda regardless, we should have, uh, vacation rental, is restrictions the right word? Guidelines.
Guidelines, I think, yeah, guidelines is good.
And then, uh, on the, the 21st agenda, could you please put gas tax on there as well?
Yeah, I actually was gonna tell you.
I've been spacing it because of all the water stuff and everything we have going on, so.
Yeah, I, I told him I was gonna do that, but with me putting the vacation rentals, you know, thing on there, anyone or city council members that come up with anything that they want to include in the packet, please make sure you get it to me so that your research is included and everyone has access to it before the meeting, just so we're all on the same page. Um, so the Thursday or Wednesday before the meeting would be the best and I'll send out an email with that date, just so that we're all on the same page.
Okay, and we will know more in a couple of days or whenever we talk to Shayla, Gary. It might not be till next week, obviously, but.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying and that's the whole point of why we had the meeting tonight, so, um.
And Tim.
All right, I mean, we can, I, I'm very confident that we can sit here and, and talk for three more hours about why we did what we did, but we're gonna have a lot more opportunity to do that, so.
Tim had something here.
Oh, Tim, sorry, go ahead.
No, I think Carolyn was in front of me and I'll go after her if it's okay with you, Pat.
No, I was just saying that Jessica wanted to talk.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
So it seems like it would help us a whole lot if we could have some information from Dina as to how many vacation rentals are actually paying TLT tax in the city of Port Orford. So let's get some factual information from Dina, so we know is the number 46, is the number 19, so we can.
I have, I actually have it in front of me right now. I was looking at it to get the numbers, I pulled it up on my computer just so I kind of knew. Um, so just to give you a, a, just kind of a round number, so we have a total of 40 people that are paying vacation, paying the TLT tax. Um, it looks like about, just a few of them are the hotels, the shoreline, the sea crest. I take the plus RV, that we're probably looking about 35. There's not very, there's a lot more vacation rentals out there than what we assume and there's more that are not paying TLT than I'm aware of.
Just gotta say that that was not a very definitive answer.
35 is where I'm going and that's what I have, I have the list in front of me. I will gladly share it if you guys would like me to send it out, that is up to you guys.
You know, what do the numbers mean when we have people that can't rent a house to do a job? And I'm talking doctors to dishwashers. So the number really doesn't matter because I have people every week say, I can't find a house. I had a good worker, but they had nowhere to live. So it could be four vacation rentals that we have right now, but we would still have the same issues. And it's the issues why we're doing this, it's not because we think this or we think that, it's because we're trying to manage our growth. So we're gonna have so much opportunity to argue about this in the next couple of weeks. We know that we're, we're moving forward with the process. We know that we're gonna talk to Shayla as soon as possible and that if we can speed up the timeline, uh, we will. And we also know that we're all gonna be gathering this information because there's a lot out there and sharing it as, as fast as we can. And a lot of that, like Tim mentioned earlier, is making sure that the businesses know what we're talking about and having, you know, letting, just giving them the opportunity for public comment. We need to do the extra effort because we're doing Zoom meetings right now and, and it's tough. And, and, uh, I don't really know what more we can say for this meeting. We got our, we know we're, regardless of if the, the meeting gets bumped up, we know at our regular meeting, we're still gonna be talking about the guidelines or regulations for vacation, for vacation rental, so that'll be on there. Gas tax is on there because James is right, revenue is the other side of the street that we need and every dollar counts. But we gotta remember seasonal gas tax, because that's kind of what we were talking about before, so.
Yes, thank you, Pat, that is what I meant.
Gotcha, no, that's, I'm glad you said that because I didn't want to have more contention, but, okay, good. So we will sell it as a seasonal gas tax because that's a lot better for our citizens, who are the ones that are gonna vote on it. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 6:03. Thank you all for coming. Um, I could have ran a better meeting, I apologize.
You did good, Pat, thank you. Thanks to everybody.
You guys have a great night.
This conference is no longer being recorded.